We're going to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we have roll call, please?
Here.
Mr. Stafford Smith.
Here.
Mr. Book.
Here.
Mr. Hudak.
Here.
Ms. Parnas.
Here.
Mr. Hyman.
Here.
Dr. Hofstein.
Here.
Ms. Fritsch.
Here.
Ms. Bradley.
Here.
I believe we have resolutions this evening, Mr. Murphy.
That's correct. We have six resolutions this evening, so if the board will just bear with me. The first resolution this evening, resolution number 2024-21, this is the resolution of the zoning board granting preliminary and final major site plan approval with use variance to construct a MICA and EMS building on property located at Grand Avenue and East Veterans Highway, block 19703, lots one and two. Eligible to vote are Mr. Stafford Smith, Mr. Hyman, Ms. Parnas, Ms. Fritsch, and Ms. Bradley.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Stafford Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Parnas.
Yes.
Mr. Hyman.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Second, we have resolution 2024-22. This is the resolution of the zoning board granting preliminary and final minor subdivision approval with use variance on property located at 22 through 26 Tom's River Road, block 17206, lots 39 and 41. Eligible to vote are Mr. Hurley, Mr. Hudak, Mr. Stafford Smith, Ms. Parnas, Ms. Fritsch, and Ms. Bradley.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Hudak.
Yes.
Ms. Parnas.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Resolution number 2024-23. This is the resolution of the zoning board granting sign variance approval on property located at 515 Monmouth Road, block 3001.01, lot 3.01. Eligible to vote are Mr. Hurley, Mr. Stafford Smith, Mr. Book, Ms. Parnas, Mr. Hyman, Ms. Fritsch, and Ms. Bradley.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Book.
Yes.
Ms. Parnas.
Yes.
Mr. Hyman.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Resolution number 2024-24. Resolution of the zoning board granting amended site plan approval for proposed eight-foot fence around existing dumpster on property located at One Nature Boulevard, block 8001, lot 5. Eligible to vote, Mr. Hurley, Mr. Stafford Smith, Mr. Book, Ms. Parnas, Mr. Hyman, Ms. Fritsch, and Ms. Bradley.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Book.
Yes.
Ms. Parnas.
Yes.
Mr. Hyman.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-25. This is the resolution of the zoning board granting amended site plan approval to convert the use of a maintenance building to a recreation use on property located at Monmouth Road, block 3001, lots two, three, and four. Eligible to vote are Mr. Hurley, Mr. Stafford Smith, Mr. Book, Ms. Parnas, Mr. Hyman, Ms. Fritsch, and Ms. Bradley.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Book.
Yes.
Ms. Parnas.
Yes.
Mr. Hyman.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
And finally, we have resolution 2024-26. This is the resolution of the zoning board granting variance relief for an installed pool filter at 10 feet to the side property line where 20 feet is required and for the location of an existing 10 by 12 shed no closer than eight feet to the rear inside property lines where 15 feet is required on property located at 20 Arrow- Arrowshead Circle, that is block 11803, lot 5. Eligible to vote are Mr. Hurley, Mr. Stafford Smith, Mr. Book, Ms. Parnas, Mr. Hyman, Ms. Fritsch, and Ms. Bradley.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Book.
Yes.
Ms. Parnas.
Yes.
Mr. Hyman.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
That concludes the resolutions for this evening.
Okay, I believe we also have minutes this evening. Elizabeth, February 21st and March the 20th.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Book.
Yes.
Mr. Hudak.
Yes.
Ms. Parnas.
Ms. Fritsch. Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
I also have a voucher in front of me from the Township of Jackson for the reporting secretary for this evening. For $175, I need a motion and a second to approve paying the bill, please.
Make a motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Book.
Yes.
Mr. Hudak.
Yes.
Ms. Parnas.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy, do we have any announcements this evening?
Okay, so we'll start with application number one this evening, which is James and Bridget Saric, and I apologize.
Saricino.
Saricino, variance 3504. That application has been withdrawn and a resolution marking same withdrawn will be prepared. As to application number two, 30 Cassville Road, Carol Nacolo, that's use variance 3470. That has been, that is being carried to the August 21st, 2024 meeting of the Jackson Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. There will be no additional notice, so if you're here for that application, please note that application number two, 30 Cassville Road, Carol Nacolo, use variance 3470 is being carried to August 21st, 2024. No additional notice. The applicant has waived time. The board will just bear with me for a moment. Application number three, Moshi and Lisa Weiss, variance 3502. That application is being carried to the July 17th, 2024 meeting of the Jackson Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. No further notice will be required. The applicant has waived time. Again, if you're here for that application, please take note, July 17th, 2024. And then we have application number five, which is James Hughes, 280 Faraday Avenue, amended site plan 261-1 with use variance 3479. That application is being placed on hold, so when the revised plans are ready, they will renotice. So that application is sort of in limbo at the moment, still pending, but the plans are being revised. Once we have those revised plans, that application will be renoticed. So that leaves only application number four, GTB Realty LLC, Cassville Tavern, which is amended site plan 23A-1 on this evening's agenda.
So, Mr. Murphy, we need to swear in the professionals?
Gentlemen, if you, if you would please raise your right hands. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments they are about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
If you would each please state your names and positions with the board.
Evan Hill, board engineer.
Ernie Peters, board planner.
Jeffrey Papporo, zoning officer.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Any matters for discussion this evening, Mr. Murphy?
I have no matters for discussion, Madam Chair.
And no administrative approvals?
No administrative approvals, Madam Chair.
Okay, we are going to move forward to what is listed as application number four. Applicant is GTB Realty LLC, Cassville Tavern. This is amended site plan 23A-1, block 11602, lot 28. Excuse me.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Thomas Downs, 101 North Felker Street, South Ambar, New Jersey, on behalf of General's Tavern, on behalf of GTB Realty, which will be trading as General's Tavern eventually. This is an application by the applicant to, basically he's in the process of renovating the Cassville Inn and has done a substantial amount of work with permits, but we've now come into the issue that we are going to be paving the parking lot and we need to get the approvals before you and a number of, number of both variances. I'm going to have testimony. I will be Mr. Stephen Paelli. He's the, he's the principal of GTB Realty. I will have Sri Kadawada, who is the engineer, John Ray, my traffic engineer, and Gordon Gemma, who's my planner, who is probably stuck on Route 9 in traffic somewhere.
If I could just interrupt you, forgive me for being rude, and just ask you to hold the microphone up. The acoustics in here stink, and yell if you have to. We won't be offended.
Better?
Much better.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So my first witness will be Mr. Paelli. Mr. Murphy, if you could swear him in?
Absolutely. Mr. Downs, I don't know if you'd like, you, you're more than welcome to have a seat at the
Okay.
table.
Can we both sit there?
As may your witness.
Okay.
It's much more comfortable, I promise. Absolutely. Good evening, sir. If you would, if you would, please, yep, you're on. You're not. No, you're not. On the bottom. You dead?
Yep.
You're good.
Okay.
Good evening, sir. If you
I'm not technical, that's for sure.
If you would please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments they are about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
This is a fact, witness, correct, Mr. Downs?
Yes, yes, sir.
If you would please state your name, spell your last, provide your address, and your affiliation to this application.
Steve Paelli.
Spell your last name.
P. S. Peter, I.E.L.L.O., I, Thomas Downs, attorney. Where do you live? I live at 107 Falkens Road in Alpe, New Jersey.
And are you the property owner, or?
What is your position with GTB Realty? I'm the owner of the property and the legal license. You're the, you're the sole Sole owner. Sole member of the corp, of the, of the LLCs, is that correct? Yes. Okay.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Okay, Mr. Paelli, you purchased the Cassville Inn, is that correct? Yes, I did. And as a result of your purchasing it, you, when you, when you bought it, you indicated that it needed a substantial amount of repairs to, to renovate the building, which hasn't been renovated in probably close to 40 years, is that correct? Correct. Extreme work. Okay. And during the course of that, it became to our attention that you need to get some, come before the board to get some approvals for, for variances, for some bulk variances and whatnot. Is that correct? Yes, sir. Okay. Now, what do you intend to, how do you intend to use the Cassville Inn? For family restaurant and somewhat of a tavern, but mostly family restaurant. We had other ones, and so we're just going to repeat what we did before. Okay, you were, you were
Mr. Downs, I'm just going to remind you both, if you would, again, I apologize the acoustics in here. You might as well just hold the microphone up to your mouth like this. Because we can't hear you.
Mr. Murphy, I was the prosecutor in Serbo, and I couldn't hear the judge sitting where the, where the secretary is, but the people in the back could hear everything that went on.
Exactly.
I understand.
I can't hear my board members that sit over there sometimes, so I get it.
So your family at one time owned General Saloon in, in Old Bridge, is that correct? Correct, yes, me and the family. And can, and can you tell me what, how, what you did with General Saloon in Old Bridge? We bought it as the raiszone. It was just a bar with shot and a beer joint. We converted it to a family restaurant. We're several holidays throughout the year and weekly menus that were catered to children and, you know, kids menus and family dinners on Wednesday nights or Friday nights. And we had a, a restaurant. Okay, and you also, you served pizza, is that correct? Yes. And then you, like burgers, burgers, pub grub, is that correct? Correct. Okay. And is that what you proposed to do at, at the Cassville Inn? Correct, yes. So you're basically taking your, your business plan from Old Bridge and moving it to Jackson? Pretty much, yes. Okay. Now, is there various things that you, that you've done to this property at this point, is that correct? We got a permits to remove all the trees from the town. They approved it. We put money in escrow. We have permits to surround the property with defenses, which we did already, to basically hide any noise or anything as we're working and doing. What kind of fence is it, sir? It's a six-foot fence that the town said that we needed. What, what, what is, what is the fence constructed of? Wood. Okay. It's a barrier fence. Okay. And you've also intent, had to redo the septic system on the property, is that correct? Yes, Ocean County approved the system, the commercial system, and it's actually installed already. Okay, and then, and now, now after you install the septic system, now, now Okay, and then, and now after you've installed the septic system, now, now you're looking to, to do, to basically upgrade the parking lot, right?
Yes.
And what do you, what do you intend to do there?
We got tentative approval from Ocean County to somebody, they, they're aware of the parking spaces, so we're putting a stormwater drain. We submitted plans about four months ago, and they came back to us, and the stormwater underground system had to be expanded like five or ten percent, we changed the plans around and submitted it to them, and so we're waiting on them to come back and approve that to go ahead with the underground stormwater system that connects to Jackson Township's stormwater drains along the main road.
Okay. Now, is there, you, the property that is up West Veterans Highway, adjacent to the, to the, to the Cassville Inn, you're, you're the owner of those properties also, is that correct?
Yes, I bought the two pro, the houses next to it, so we wouldn't have any problems to say, or anybody saying the noise, so I bought the adjacent properties, and we're remodeling them as it is now.
And originally, you were working off of the, what you believe to be the nineteen seventy-five approval that the prior owner received?
Yes, so the John and Marilyn got approved pretty much for all this in nineteen seventy-five, but of course, time goes on, and we have to upgrade everything to code, and they didn't have anything with lighting, or ADA parking, or anything, so that's part of all the improvement that we're doing at this point.
Okay, and then when, when the, the owners of the Cassville Inn, when, when they owned the place, they also owned the property that was across the street on West Veterans Highway, is that correct?
Yes.
And one of the resolutions, or the plans that you saw from nineteen seventy-five indicated that they had parking across the street?
Correct.
And since then, since that, that time, the county has widened West Veterans Road Highway, is that correct?
Yes.
And so that's, it's, and you have, you have, did not purchase the property on the other side of the street?
No.
So you, all your parking then is going to be, going to be in the area of your, of your property that's adjacent to the Cassville Inn?
Correct, we're trying to upgrade and come up to code, which they were approved in nineteen seventy-five.
And is there, and you're doing renovations to the building itself, is that correct?
Correct.
And you're modernizing all of that?
I guess we're waiting for everything, the town has all our plans in engineering, in structural engineering, I guess we're going to take it apart and put it back together.
Okay. I have no other questions of Mr. Paelli at this time.
Mr. Book?
Just so I understand the geography a little bit better, the lot across from you is vacant, that's the lot on the other side of West Veterans Highway, did you say you own that too?
No, I do not.
You do not own that?
Do not own that anymore.
You never, you never owned it?
Never owned it.
No, sir.
But that was at one time associated with, with the, with the barn, wouldn't folks park there and walk across West Veterans Highway?
Correct, John and Marilyn, they owned that property, but I guess years ago, they went for the variance to take down the trees like I did, and put the park in there, so I have, all the plans were approved in seventy-five for that, but I guess they never choose to do it because they owned across the street, and they just never did it. So they sold it before I purchased the tavern.
So if I understand your testimony, then the parking now, as you planned, is all going to be contained within that particular lot, no need to cross West Veterans Highway, there's going to be one lane into your lot off of Cassville Road?
Correct, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for this witness?
What was the name of the place in Old Bridge?
General Saloon.
Thank you. This is for my own personal.
Mr. Hurley?
Just out of, for purposes of the record, I've noticed in the application, there were a number of resolutions previously granted, one by the zoning board in nineteen ninety-six, I think one by the planning board, a lot earlier than that.
Please use your microphone.
I'm sorry? It was on. Now it's on, well, now it's on. I'm sorry, I had the wrong button again, as usual. There were, there were two resolutions that I've seen, one by the planning board, one by the zoning board, appears the one in nineteen ninety-six, is that the latest board approval?
Mr. Hurley, to answer that question, we didn't realize it was a nineteen ninety-six approval until, until your, your professional staff reviewed the application.
Okay, well, my, my question is basically, this is an application for some bulk variances and amended site plan, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, who granted the site plan?
That would have been nineteen seventy-five with the planning board, I believe.
And my question is, are they rightfully here? If this is, if this is an amended site plan, and there are bulk variances required, do we even have jurisdiction to do that?
I mean, arguably, yes, because there's bulk variances required, but the planning board can also grant those same bulk variances.
It was my understanding from when, from the inception of this application, because there were, both boards had some action over the years.
Right.
We decided to keep it with the zoning board, and.
But do we have the legal authority to keep it?
I don't have, I don't.
That's the question, really, I mean, if there's, I just want to make sure that if in fact, there's an appeal, we got a problem here. I want to get that straight for the record.
Madam Chair, you may be a witness away, or the applicant's attorney wants to weigh in or get a witness up here, leave the properties in the NC zone, and bars, restaurants, taverns aren't permitted in the NC zone, so regardless of what it was in ninety-six or seventy-five, in two thousand twenty-four, it appears it's a non-permitted use. So unless someone shows us something different in two thousand twenty-four, it appears that it's a non-conforming use, so whether it's a use variance, or the expansion of a non-conforming use, and I don't know if the applicant's attorney or planner is ready to discuss that or not.
But the use would be allowed to continue, would it not?
Under the MLUL, if it's a non-conform, pre-existing non-conforming use, the answer's yes, but we're looking, is there, is there a proposed expansion to that use by way of this particular application? I'm looking for a copy, and I don't, the problem is, I don't, I know, I have not seen the nineteen ninety-six resolution from the zoning board.
Well, if it is, if it's expanding the use, then, then we're okay. So long as a notice provided.
Mr. Hurley, I would, I would submit that, and I know, I know your expertise of being on the bench of Middlesex for many years, and I've been before you, but they answered your.
I hope it was all good.
I'm sorry?
I hope it was all good.
Oh, it was, it was, it was, it was sometimes adversarial, and sometimes it got the results. But, but by and large, sir, it is an expansion of a previous, previous non-conforming use.
So if we're, so if we're looking at an expansion, then we're okay?
Yes.
Before the zoning board, the use is not, is no longer permitted, expansion of a non-conforming use, so would fall under the D category in subsection seventy, this board would have jurisdiction.
That's correct.
So I just want to make it clear that the application is not just for an amended site plan, it's for an amended site plan and an expansion of a non-conforming use.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
For the chair, for the chair. Couple of questions, well, for the witness, hours of operation, what are the proposed hours of operation?
Monday to Friday, eleven in the morning, Saturday from eleven to, I mean, Friday and Saturday, eleven to one in the morning.
I'm sorry, Monday to Friday, eleven AM to what?
Till midnight, and Friday and Saturday, eleven in the morning to one in the morning.
You're, you're basically going to, your hours, if you, you're going to conform to the, to the municipal ordinance for, that handles liquor licenses, is that correct?
If you can, I'm just going to opine for a moment on the prior issue. So I'm looking at the resolutions here, and it looks to me like the last resolution on this property was done in nineteen ninety-six, if I'm correct. Nineteen ninety-six, twenty-three, this was a resolution of the zoning board of adjustment of the township of Jackson. It's a zoning board resolution. Isn't it? Well, whoever did this resolution noted that it was both zoning board and planning board, so I couldn't, Ernie, I couldn't tell you what this is. However, I am going to assume, you know, I can, I can only make an assumption, again, there's references to both, this was done by, I couldn't tell you who, but Dassie Murphy and Wellerston at the time, that references both the zoning board and the planning board. It appears to me that based upon the contents of the resolution, that this is a zoning board resolution, and specifically something that you had pointed out to me was the fact that one of the first whereas clauses states that this is a pre-existing non-conforming use, which it is, and therefore is obviously grandfathered in by the MLUL, however, the last board to touch this particular application in nineteen ninety-six appears to me to be the zoning board, and while the resolution itself doesn't particularly retain jurisdiction, I would opine that based upon the fact that we were the last ones to have, have contact with it, that we have jurisdiction in this application, and I further, that's further supported by the fact that this is a pre-existing non-conforming use. That would be my opinion on jurisdiction, I think we have it. Sorry to throw you off your game, but I wanted to get that on the record.
What are, what are the, what are your anticipated number of employees per shift, and how many shifts per day?
Considering the work ethic these days, the shifts could go as four hours to five hours to eight hours, I mean, the labor's probably the hardest part of the business, but usually five to six employees at a given time of, the amount of customers are in, sometimes it's a holiday weekend, it's busier, some days, Mondays and Tuesdays, it might be just a sports crowd, you know, so it's, to give you an honest answer, it's, you know, it's hard, you know, but from past experience in the other taverns I had, some days you can't even keep up, some days we're all standing there looking at each other, but the average is five to six. And our, my, my two kids usually work there on and off, and we need help.
Do you, do you rent any part of this building out for, for parties, for weddings, or is this solely a restaurant that's open?
It's a restaurant, but the way, the way John and Marilyn had it set up, they had a little outside area, and so then, depending on the holidays, or somebody has a christening weekend, the way our plans are, close the little outside pavilion off for a christening, or a kid's birthday party, or something like that, yes, that's what we've done in the past other places.
Does the, does the building close down, does the restaurant close down as a result to the public?
No, 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 it, it would be totally separate. Kitchen has different ways to get into that area and stuff like that, to accommodate for a small party, outsider, a holiday event, we have holiday events, so we do different things.
The reason I'm asking those types of questions is because you're asking for a variance from the parking requirement, you're asking, because your site can't accommodate, well, because of the septic system, the site can't accommodate the ordinance requirement for parking. So a lot of cases, we like, we like to get a better understanding of how you are going to schedule and manage those types of events that occur simultaneous to the bar and pub and restaurant being open. So you're, there's, because you're the operator and the owner, you will not allow people to park across the street, because, first of all, it's not your property, right, but, yeah, you will self-police and make sure you schedule your events to make sure that there's adequate parking.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes.
That's all I have for now.
Any, Mr.? Doctor Hoss? Madam Chair, would this outdoor area be enclosed in a tent or something like that? If need be?
The outside area will have sizable umbrellas and a garden with a fire pit and a, like a water feature, and mostly like a garden area just where they could serve food outside and the outside existing pavilion.
In other words, hope for good weather if somebody has an outdoor.
Correct.
Just to satisfy something, I, I looked up, the, the Cassville Inn was, it was a building dating back to the seventeen hundreds as a stagecoach stop.
Correct.
And nineteen eighty-two, it became a part of the National Register of Historic Places. Are you limited to what kind of changes you can make to the building?
One of the reasons I bought the place is, we searched, and my attorney searched, and John never paid the fees, and never, it never, it just was noted as one, but it was never documented as one, like the place next door to Deli and stuff. So we're not in the guidelines of an historic place, but we are keeping the inside box building the same, just the outside and going back to like eighteen ninety-six, where they had the outside open walk-around, instead of the people standing outside by the road who were opening it up, like the General Saloon in Old Bridge, to have the pillars, and people could walk and open it up a little bit more.
Just one more question, are you changing the name, or would you keep it as Cassville Tavern?
We changed the name already, it's called, it's going to be called General's Tavern.
Disappointing, I thought you would keep the name, just, just, it's just an old-time place in Jackson, and everybody in this area knows about it.
There's going to be the main bar on the inside, and there's going to be the outside little bar, and it'll have a couple garage doors, but we're taking the old, original bar and putting it over there, but a lot of memory will be even assigned from the Cassville Tavern inside, so you'll go back in history from when you go from one side to the other.
Okay, noted, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any additional, Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Paelli, I want to talk a little bit about the outdoor area, if for no other reason to understand what you're doing, and almost more importantly, what you're not doing.
Correct.
You're serving liquor outside, right?
Correct.
So the area has to be enclosed in some form?
It will be fenced in, yes.
It'll be fenced in?
Yes.
So there'll be a gate?
You'll have to enter the main entrance to the tavern to get there, but I know through fire regulations, we will have an emergency gate on the, on the outside pavilion.
Okay. At this point, respectfully, all we have is your engineer's plan with a bunch of brick pavers shown.
Correct.
Is there a layout, is there a maximum capacity, a number of seats? At some point in time, standing room only, you'd have cars parking anywhere, so I'm trying to understand what the capacity of the outdoor seating area is as it relates to what the parking relief you're asking for is.
I believe it's going to be approximately a third.
I'm sorry?
A third of the initial seating.
I'm trying to understand, how many people, how many patrons?
The initial area to be outside, I believe there's probably five tables of four outside, and in an area, in the bar area that's in the building, there's a separate little bar, will hold another seven to eight people.
Okay, so you talked about separate bar, is there a bar outside of the building in the outdoor seating area, or is it inside the building and it serves the outdoor seating area?
Correct, inside the building, it serves the outside, yes.
Okay.
So it's like one big, the way, I don't know if anybody here was there before, it had a straight bar, from what the plans are, it's going to be an angled bar now, with the packaged goods and all the stuff that they had to go, and then you walk to like a double dare, double-door area, then you'll have the old, original bar from the place, it's only going to be about a six-foot or a seven-foot bar there, and that'll serve the outside pavilion, and in that area, you'll only have like six chairs and a couple leaning areas to go.
Okay, will there be TVs, speakers, outside in the outdoor seating area?
I'm sure there'll be low music speakers on the outside, yes.
Been to a bar or two in my life, believe it or not, I'm more concerned, not what you want to do, but what you're not going to do.
Correct.
So we're not going to have fight night out there at one o'clock in the morning with the speakers and the TVs playing?
I hope to be on the way home at that time.
I'm just trying to get an understanding of what impact an outdoor area can have to the surrounding area.
Correct.
Respectfully, I don't, this isn't about you, it's about the use itself.
Absolutely.
Making sure that we talk about it and have an understanding regarding it. That's all I have right now, thank you, Madam Chair.
Any additional questions for this witness? Mr. Hurley?
Just one, is any live entertainment proposed?
The last places I have, we never really had bands, we had like a one or a two-piece person inside by the bar on events, not full bands at all.
How about this place?
No full bands at all.
No, no, no live entertainment?
We might have karaoke, we might have bingo night, as we did in the past on our solo nights, and usually a Friday or Saturday, we'll have a one-person DJ or sing along with a couple girls, but that's about it, a full.
Full-fledged bands now.
And how late at night would that run?
We're usually done by 12:30, 1:00.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for this witness? Mr. Downs, would you like to call your next witness?
Sure. I think he just came in. Can we have Sri Kattavala? I'll butcher that name. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to vouch, vouch him for his?
Absolutely. Good evening. Thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear from the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you would please state your name, spell your last, provide your affiliation, and your credentials for the board's benefit.
My, my name is Sri, S-H-R-I, last name K-O-T-D-A-W-A-L-A. I'm a professional engineer in state of New Jersey since 1998, and I have a degree in civil engineering from Kansas State University since 1994.
This board accepts your credentials. Just please keep in mind to speak as loud as you can. Thank you.
Thank you very much for allowing me to talk.
And you're providing engineering testimony, correct?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Sri, you designed the plans for the expansion of the Castle Inn, is that correct?
Yes, I did.
And we, just a, a point of housekeeping, we do acknowledge receipt of Wilmington Varick's letter, review letter of April 24th, 2024, and then the review letter of EDH Engineering dated May 11th, 2024.
Thank you.
Okay. Sri, could you, could you describe what, what's been done on the premises so far since, since you've been involved with the planning of?
This office has been involved since last eight months on the subject project, but if you can look at the exhibit here, I'll just quickly explain, we created L-shaped parking lot, and our intent was to provide maximum number of parking spaces. And that required us to ask, seek some waivers and variances, because we were trying to achieve as many parking spaces we can achieve. And the traffic engineer is our next professional, he would talk more about why we need certain parking-related variances, but I can explain what we did here is, by the law, we required 48 parking spaces, and we are providing 34. But the traffic engineer will provide the testimony about what's the use of the property, and 34 parking spaces which are provided is adequate for that particular use, which owner and traffic engineer will talk about it. So, so my office, with the parking lot, there's just, the green area you see between L-shaped wings is a septic system. So, technically, we, you can see that entire property has been utilized for a parking space. And naturally, the water goes in northwardly direction from West Veteran Highway, so it's going towards the neighbors' property. So, we tried to go like reverse gravity and try to connect to the catch basin, which is on a Veterans Highway. And county reviewed our first submission, and they had multiple comments about, because they were very cautious about not adding more water to their system. And we were able to actually, since our submission to township, we revised the stormwater management system, which meets the current rules, and the system is about three times larger than what we submitted to the board engineer. So, now, we are expecting any day approval from the county, because the county has jurisdiction over the West Veterans Highway. And we have provided two ADA compliant parking spaces required by the law, and two spaces has AV charging facility available for the patrons. And other than that landscaping, we try to squeeze in as many trees as can, but as we see the space. But we have filled up like the areas, so it will give some kind of little screening where the headlights from the car will not like kind of reflect on it all.
You designed fencing on the area too, is that correct?
Yes, yes. And we will have a retaining wall to hold the parking lot, like a smaller wing of the L shape. It's about three to four feet high to hold the grids and take the water out to the West Veterans Highway.
Right. And the, and the, and the fence is six, is a six-foot fence, is that correct?
Correct.
And it, and it's a, and it, and it doesn't permit any, any light to emanate off the property?
Yes. And I have reviewed the letters from township professionals, and we don't see any problem in achieving any of the concern and comments there. Yeah, we will be able to achieve all the compliances based on the comments given by the township planner and the engineer.
Except for the variances that we're looking for, is that correct?
Yes, except for the variances, correct.
I have no other questions of the engineer at this time.
The chair?
Evan?
Thank you. So, I'm referring to the May 11th, 2024 report that our, our office issued. We noted that the property is located along two county roads. You had indicated, I'm sorry, the owner had indicated that you had alre, you have already made application to the county planning board?
Yes.
Okay. And what's the status of their review? What changes have you had to make to these plans for them? If you could summarize that?
Yes. The concrete appearance at the both entrances. So, we have the concrete appearance and the stormwater management system, they wanted us to comply with the new rules.
Right.
And we are complying with the new rules, and so the system is about three times larger than what we submitted to the township.
Right.
And we are, we are at the last leg of a review. First, we have the conditional approval from them.
Okay. But conceptually, they've signed on to the two entrances, the one-way in, and then the dual movement entrance on West Vets?
Yes.
Okay. Are they requiring any further, any additional roadway improvements along the frontage?
We, we are negotiating at the access. They might want a taper, so they were not sure, so basically they are looking into it, and we have told them if it's needed, the applicant will do the taper.
Are they asking you to extend the concrete curbing along the entire frontage?
Not the entire frontage, but we have a curbing up to halfway.
Right.
So, so that was a part of it. They are reviewing it. If they ask us to do it, we'll do it.
Okay. This historically, this board is like, so we have an ordinance in town, right, where developments require, especially commercial developments, require curbing and sidewalk. Now, we understand that this is within the jurisdiction for Ocean County, but in that instance, the board has historically, and I'll, I'm not speaking for the board here, but historically, the board has requested that the applicant be proactive in, in, in your discussions with the county, that the town would really like to see curbing and sidewalk here. All right? So, whatever curbing and sidewalk currently exists, if it's dilapidated, it should be repaired, right? And then any additional, anywhere where curbing and sidewalk does not exist, it would be installed. So, the, the op, the goal here would be for you guys to be proactive and indicate to the county that the township would really like curbing and sidewalk along all frontage. And if the county says no, then the town would accept, in lieu of constructing it, a payment to the pedestrian safety fund. So, that's, that's the process here that we've typically pursued.
Sir, as I understood it, the county redesigned that entire intersection about five or six years ago. And as, did all the widening and actually had to taking of the property along Castle Inn on, on West Veterans Highway, a substantial amount of the property to, to widen the roadway. And they did install the curbing and sidewalks there.
Well, in, they installed limited curbing and sidewalks, and they put hand, they put curb cuts in there for, for accessibility cuts, right? Ramps. The reason why they didn't continue the curbing down to pass the property frontage was because it was wooded. There was nothing there. Now, you're proposing to put something there, so the burden would be on the applicant to complete the, the improvements. I mean, you're talking about 80, 90 feet of curbing and some sidewalk. It's along your frontage, so it's something that I would highly recommend you approach the county and ask them permission to do that.
We will comply with the county, county wants, requires us to do.
That's not what I'm saying. That's not, that's, that's not what I'm, that's not what I'm saying. I'm, I'm suggesting you be proactive and tell the county the town would like to see this curbing and sidewalk installed, and if they say no, then you do a contribution in lieu of.
I understand.
Okay. Thank you. The existing guide rail along the road, is that gonna stay?
Yes.
Okay. The parking lot, the rear parking lot, we'll call it, the rear parking lot is surrounded by up anywhere from a three to four foot high off-the-ground retaining wall. The existing six-foot-high board-on-board fence is located at grade. Are you relocating, are you gonna remove that existing six-foot fence and put it on top of the retaining wall?
We were planning where the retaining wall section is, we will lift it, and then where the natural grade is, we will keep it.
Okay. If you could just indicate that on the plans, revise the plans accordingly, because the concern is if you're gonna be three to four foot off the ground, now vehicles are, vehicle headlights are nine feet off the ground, behind, you know, nine feet beyond the property, so it'd be nice to have a solid barrier there, because there's not a lot of room for plant material to provide adequate screening.
Would that, would that require another variance for height?
Uh, only.
Between the three-foot, three or four-foot?
No, you could do six-foot alongside and rear property lines. You can do six-foot and, you just can't do six-foot forward of the principal dwelling.
What I'm saying is if you're putting, you're stacking the fence on top of the four-foot retaining wall, it's a 10-foot.
No, your grade is, your grade is the top of the wall, so it's six-foot from grade.
Different towns, different rules.
Yeah. We did have some comment, we had some comments, probably the same comments that the county had on, on the stormwater management system. It needs to be redesigned to, to be consistent with the newish or newer DEP regu, and township regulations. Obviously, any, any appro, if the application were to be approved, the condition would be that they satisfy the comments and that the stormwater management system be redesigned in accordance with the latest regulations.
Sri, will you, you submit a, an updated plan to the, to the board engineer to show up what you're doing, that you said, submitted to the county?
Yes, we haven't, we haven't submitted to the township professionals. Mr. Peters?
The Castle Road entrance is one-way in only?
Yes, one-way in.
Okay. On the site plan sheet, there's a stop bar and a stop sign shown there. Those are gonna get removed?
Yeah, it's an error.
And then where the one-way entrance in off of Castle hits the first parking area, we'll put some do not enter, one-way, do not enter signs?
Okay, we'll, yes.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any additional questions for this witness?
I don't know if the, to the chair, please. The sign that you have on West Veterans?
Yes.
What is the size? Will it be lighted? Will it have changeable type? Just describe the sign that you're putting on.
It's a ground-mounted sign. It will be a lighted sign, six feet by. Yeah, we provided a 16-feet square feet area while 30 square feet is allowed.
And, uh, yes, Mr. Peters?
You would be able to add a detail, the construction detail to the plans. So, you're not, you're not seeking any design or var, I'm sorry, variance relief for the sign?
We have a setback variance typical.
I'm sorry, the setback, yes, but you're not set for, for the sign square footage?
No.
And it's gonna be a backlit sign or like a spotlight mounted?
It's a backlit sign.
Backlit. No changeable copy? You're not proposing any changeable copy, like LEDs?
No, 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 it's not.
Any additional questions for this witness?
I have one.
Mr. Book?
If you start the entrance into the bar, into the tavern, typically, I cross West Veterans Highway, jump over the barriers, the winter parking line down the road, and then make a configuration to the, to the entrance. So, is that still gonna be the main entrance? Is that gonna be?
I, I think it's the, traffic engineer will talk more about it, but.
I'm losing you.
The, the traffic engineer will know about, more about the circulation, but the access is available from both, both, both of the roads, so.
I, I don't know if I'm understanding your issue. I'm wondering about after somebody has parked their car?
Yes.
How are they going to get into the service? Where are those entrances going to be?
Okay. Yes. First is on the, at, at the, near the Castle Road, the main entrance currently.
Okay, so on Castle Road, there'll be an, an entrance to the entrance from walking?
Yes.
There, there used to be an entrance on West Veterans Highway to get in. Is that entrance gonna remain?
It's only available now for the ADA, ADA parking spaces. We have created a ramp. They will be able to access through that road. No, I don't think anyone else, owner can talk about it. Which one will be the primary entrance of the building?
I, I don't wanna belabor the point, but there's a, there's a danger and safety aspect that I recall, and it was crossing West Veterans to get into the entrance on West Veterans. What I'm looking for is to see if in the process of this reconfiguration, is that entrance gonna be eliminated, so people will not be crossing West Veterans to get into the bar?
There's no, we don't own any parking on West Veterans, so that's, there's.
I understand that, because you're only testing it. So, I'm back to, if that entrance is still there, it may be an enticement for somebody to cross West Veterans to get into that entrance. I kinda like to get again with the, with the new driving pattern and parking, where people would get entrance into the bar where they're not dodging vehicles to get across West Veterans Highway. That's, that's what I'm looking for, that's important.
And I, I understand that, but what, but there's a fire safety back, for a fire safety issue, you're gonna have to have a second entrance. You can't just have one entrance in and out. Am I correct?
I, I don't know that my, that my question's being answered. I'll wait for you. Maybe you can bring the owner back up and he'll be better.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions of the engineer?
Any other questions for this witness? No further questions for this witness. If you'd like to pull the owner back up, that's fine.
John Ray, please, my traffic engineer.
Did, Mr. Ray, did you wanna have?
Mr. Paeley wants to answer the entrance question.
Thank you.
Mr. Book?
Excuse me?
He's, he's gonna answer your questions.
Hi, Mr. Book. Over the years, everybody crossed the road, they jumped the guardrail. At this time, we configured the parking lot and the outside pavilion. I want you to park your car with the new sidewalks that everybody's questioning me to do. Either way, they're going in, and the people are gonna come along the sidewalk with a guardrail, and they're gonna walk only direction to the entrance. And is the old entrance there? Yes. That's the only entrance into the main bar. And, but we're gonna have landscaping and, but there's no way to come into the bar unless through the parking anymore. Because along the road, we'll have a guardrail, and then we're gonna have all trees like a wall along there. So, unless they're gonna dodge the guardrail and the traffic and jump through the trees, it's not even a question for anybody to come that way anymore. So, it is all the parking and the outside pavilion and the entrances will have areas, you can only go one way. It's almost like, because we have to put the railings up, the ADA railings, so it would be like a guardrail, plus an ADA railing, stainless railings coming up right in front of it. So, if somebody comes up in a wheelchair with a ramp, you have to go there. There's no way of going across the road anymore.
Madam Chairlady?
Yes, Mr. Hurley.
While, while he's here.
Wait, wait.
Steven, come on back.
Just a quick question. The resolution that was adopted by this board back in 96, 1996, had restrictions on the operation. The restrictions applied to the kitchen to be closed at 11:30 PM and the bar to be closed at midnight. Are you still willing to comply with that?
On certain nights and weekends.
On certain nights and weekends, you'll comply or you will not comply?
I will comply. I was hoping on Friday and Saturday, we could have the kitchen open until midnight.
About the bar?
Of course, the bar. Of course, the bar.
When do you want to close the bar on Friday, Saturday nights?
So you're not willing to comply with the prior resolution that was, that was granted by this board?
It's not that I don't want to comply, just know from future taverns that I have, the ABC requires you to close, gives you the opportunity to make a call, and hopefully the town goes to our call, which we can open, like other taverns that I had. I had other taverns that we were allowed to open to three o'clock in the morning, but that's not what I'm looking to have a party night, I just, hopefully that's a far route from the shore, that people want to stop in on the way home to get something to eat before they make it back to Jackson from the shore. That's what the real hours are for the kitchen is. But usually, 11:30, it's last call in the kitchen, and by 12 o'clock, the place is closing from Monday to Thursday.
If I may, I'd just like to clarify the language of the prior resolution. It does state that whereas the applicant has testified that the kitchen closes at 11:30 PM and that no food may be ordered beyond that hour, and whereas the applicant further testified that the bar shall stop serving beverages at the outside bar at 12:00 midnight. So that restriction in that prior resolution was limited to the outside bar, is that something you'd be willing to abide by?
Yes.
Does that satisfy you, Mr. Hurley? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Ray?
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, Mr. Ray, thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony information, questions or comments that you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you would please state your name, provide your affiliation and your credentials.
John Ray, R E A, a professional engineer with McDonough and Ray Associates, 1431 Lakewood Road, Manasquan, New Jersey, appearing as a traffic engineer and a parking consultant for the applicant this evening.
Mr. Ray, you've conducted a traffic study.
I'm just going to note on the record, Mr. Ray, you've been here thousands of times, we accept your credentials.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Ray, you've conducted a traffic, a traffic study for the subject property?
Yes, we did.
Could you describe the, provide the results of your, your study to the, to the board?
Sure, well, we conducted peak hour traffic counts at the intersection of West Veterans Highway and Cassville Road, as the board knows, they're both county roads. We projected traffic volumes for the restaurant based on the number of seats, and I want to talk, talk about that in a little bit of detail because it ties into the parking variance that we require. It is my understanding, and I don't know if the engineer testified to it or not, I didn't hear him say it, but there are 47 seats inside the tavern and 24 seats outside. So looking at a worst case scenario, one in which all 71 seats would be occupied, that's what I looked at in terms of doing an analysis of the, of the parking. But I want to talk about the traffic first. We did a traffic study in accordance with the Ocean County Planning Board's protocol of expanding traffic volumes out for 10 years, and the findings were that the two-site driveways would operate at level of service B or better during the 2034 design year for the peak hours. The off-site signalized intersection at West Veterans and Cassville will operate at level of service C for the no build condition for the design year of 2034, and level of service C for the build condition. So that will be an acceptable situation. With respect to the parking, it is my understanding, and perhaps Evan or Ernie can correct me, I think the township's requirement is one parking space for every 50 square feet of building area. That's a pretty high standard, and it's my understanding that that particular standard was something that was developed years ago, looking at the Stewart's and A&amp;W Root Beer stands that had very small buildings, but they brought the food out to you as you were sitting in your car, and that's where I think that one per 50 square feet standard came from. I don't really think it's applicable in this case. The 34 parking spaces that are being provided, provide a ratio of almost one parking space for every two seats in the inside and outside of the bar, and a typically used standard for, for a facility like this would be one parking space for every three seats, which would equate to somewhere around 22 seats, 22 parking spaces being required based on the number of seats. The 34 spaces that are provided go well beyond that, and like I said, almost provide a ratio of one parking space per two seats, so I do believe the parking will be adequate based on the size of the facility, the number of seats provided, I do think the parking will be adequate. I have not been involved in the county application, I did hear that you would like our engineer to go back to the county and request that sidewalk and curbing, curbing be extended along the county roadway frontages, and I understand that, and as Evan indicated, if the county will not go along with that, the applicant will have to make a payment to the townships, I guess it's the sidewalk fund, or I guess it's called the pedestrian fund. That basically summarizes it.
Mr. Houdak?
For all your testimony, we heard that the, there would be about five employees there, and you seem to be concentrating on the number of seats, patrons, and you didn't touch on where the employees are going to park, which if there's five employees there during a shift change, there could be more cars in the parking lot. So where are the employees going to park?
Actually, the standard that I refer to, the one parking space for every three seats includes employees and patrons, that's a generally used standard that includes both. So I don't think there's any separate, I felt comfortable because the actual number of parking spaces to seats was closer to one per two than the one per three that's typically utilized. I'm very comfortable that the employee parking will not cause, you know, the parking lot to be insufficient for the number of patrons they expect. If there were five employees, and they'd still be 29 parking spaces for the balance of the, the operation, and based on the number of seats, that would be able to support almost close to 90 seats, and we have 74, so I do believe the parking will be adequate. And there's really no place to park along either one of the county highways, as, as everybody knows in that area of town, so the parking will have to be self-contained.
That was my next question.
Yes.
Where, if there's overflow, where is that?
It can't go on the county roads, I, I don't recall if parking restrictions are on those two roads, but parking should not be permitted on either one of those two roadways, in my opinion. And if parking restrictions need to be placed on those roadways, I believe the governing body can pass that ordinance, I'm sure the county wouldn't object to it.
So with all of your experience, your feeling, your expertise indicates that there is adequate parking for all the patrons and all the employees on site?
Correct, yes, thank, yes.
Not to belabor this point, but just to piggyback on Mr. Houdak's question, you mentioned earlier to the owner, I don't want to butcher your last name, forgive me, you mentioned earlier potentially christening or a birthday party, so let's just assume best case scenario for you as a businessman, but worst case scenario for parking, if you have a christening or a birthday party and the bar's still open, because I believe that was testimony, where are all these people going to park? I guess I'm, I'm, just want to understand myself.
I, I think I have to punt that back to Steve, the operator, because I'm, you know, I, I think there's an occupancy limit within the building itself too that would probably be a limiting factor, but I haven't seen the architectural, so I don't know what that is.
Mr. Towns, do we have a occupancy limit for the building? And Downs, excuse me. Do we have an occupancy limit for the building?
Mr. Paele testified that he's got 20, 20 seats in the outside area and 47 seats in the, in the interior of the bar. So that's, that's where we got the seven.
Yeah, I thought it was 24, if it's 20, the parking numbers are even better.
24, 24 and 47, that's 71.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Houdak?
Maybe you guys should come up with a Plan B, in the event, you have an event that requires parking, perhaps arrangements can be made offsite with valet parking, bringing the cars over there, that's just a suggestion.
I think the applicant should take that under advisement, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for this witness? Mr. Hurley?
Mr. Ray, if I can, I'm, I'm having a little difficulty with the calculation. Your opinion is that two spaces, or one space per two seats is adequate?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And based on the calculations, there are 71 seats.
Right.
So that should amount to 36 parking spaces.
Correct, and we have 34, and if you recall my testimony, Mr. Hurley, I said it's almost one parking space per two seats, not exactly, but almost.
What about the employees? Now, it was testified to that there would be five to six employees.
And as I testified to before, that parking ratio, that one space per three seats, the employees are included in that ratio, that's a very commonly used ratio for restaurants, places of assembly, so my testimony is, due to the fact that we have closer to a one parking space per two seat ratio than the one space per three seat ratio, parking will be more than adequate. And, and the employees are included in those ratios.
On the ordinance provision, you indicated that it was one space per 50 square feet, does that include employees also?
I didn't read the entire ordinance, so I wouldn't venture an opinion on that. But as I've indicated, my understanding is that's an old standard that applied to the old drive-in Stewart's Root Beer and A&amp;W Root Beer stands, of which there still may be some, you know, around central New Jersey, I know we used to see them when we were kids, but I think that's an old standard.
Thank you.
For the chair, the ordinance requirement of one space for 50 square foot is based on gross floor area of a building, and that would include any employees, just as if it was medical office space, it's one space for 200 square foot of gross, and that has those employees built into it as well.
If this were one space per 50 square feet, if we use that standard, how many spaces would be required here?
I think it was 48.
It was 48.
48. And I would, I'm going to agree with Mr. Ray with the, in respect to, with respect to the fact that uses like this in other parts of New Jersey typically are in that one to, one space for every three seat range, that that is customary, and that's what's, the more modern ordinances tend to reflect that. I do agree that ours is outdated and probably hasn't been changed since the Stewart Root Beer's days. I would agree with that comment.
My other concern is that based on the testimony of the operator here, the owner, he indicated that there would be people coming back and forth from the shore, they would want to stop and have something to eat, something of that nature, that makes it sound seasonal. Have you ever done any, any investigation, analysis, whether or, whether or not more spaces are required in the summertime, and less than when the time has been testified to?
I, I think the, the parking demand would be limited by the size of the facility and the number of seats, whether it's seasonal or not. It wouldn't, I, I assumed that both the indoor and outdoor seating would be used at the same time, so that would reflect the seasonal factor, if you will.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for this witness?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Gordon Gemma will be my planner.
Good evening, Mr. Gemma, thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony information, questions or comments that you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, and for the record, Gordon Gemma, 68 Seneca Place, Oceanport, New Jersey.
Mr. Gemma, you have also appeared here many, many times, so I believe that I wouldn't be out of line to say that the board accepts your credentials.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Mr. Gemma, you have conducted a land use inventory on, on the subject property, is that correct?
Correct.
And could you identify to the, to the board what your, what your findings are?
Sure, just to make it quick, I had the opportunity to review the plans, listen to the testimony, and agree that this property is in the NC zone, the property did receive prior approvals, in which case it was deemed to be a pre-existing non-conforming use, which is the basis for the board's jurisdiction here. In addition to the D2 variance for the expansion of the non-conforming use, the applicant is seeking a number of C variances, some of them are virtue of a pre-existing condition, size of the lot, width of the lot, it's not being changed, there's not property that they could buy to cure those things, some are a function of the site plan the applicant is seeking, those are new variances. Before I go to the issue of the variances, just want to make a few comments about the zone. As you can see, page one of the plan showed the location of the subject property. You can see it's in the NC zone, across the street from the PVC zone, PVC two zone, and it's farther away, a couple lots away from any residential zones, and it's something you should take into account, that in the NC zone, residential uses, although they are of concern and they exist, are not permitted uses, they're conditionally permitted uses. The condition is they were built prior to 2002. What does that tell you? It tells you that in this zone, you're not trying to have more residential uses, you're trying to have more commercial uses. And that goes to the heart of your master plan. Your master plan, I know it's being revised, hasn't been fully revised yet, your master plan was done in 2009, was an amendment in 2023, 23 amendment didn't change much, dealt more with the, your land use plan and conservation elements, but we basically, the objectives and goals in your master plan basically say, you're trying to put consistent uses in consistent zones, and when you look at your goals and objectives, you should look at, is this consistent with what's around you and what the purpose of that zone is? And that really tells you what you're trying to do, and in fact, it even goes so far as to say that the objective number two, it's an economic objective, the economic objective number two in your master plan says that is to provide local employment opportunities, economic development in the appropriate zones. So you're saying to the people who own properties in these zones, you want to help encourage economic development. Why is that important? Because when we get to the standard for relief, that goes to the heart of, doesn't advance a purpose of zoning. So let's go to that. D2, the purposes, the standard for a D2 variance is different than a D1 variance, the use exists, so you're not trying to prove the validity and the purposes of zoning for the use, you're trying to focus on the expansion. How does this expansion of the use, the addition of a parking, the addition of the outdoor seating, advance the purposes of zoning? Parking's easy, there's no parking there now, there's parking across the street. If testimony from others that it's safer to have a parking onsite than across on West Veterans Highway, no kidding. So I don't think there's any argument that providing parking onsite, even though it's not everything your zone wants, is safe, adequate, advances the purposes of zoning as found in the MLUL, providing upgraded drainage, provided upgraded sewer, all advanced purposes is found in the MLUL. I don't think the board has any question, it advances the purposes of zoning. The real question might be, what is an outdoor seating? How does that advance a purpose of zoning? And that goes to back to your master plan, it said, in the zone that encourages these uses, in a zone that's economics, is important, you're trying to develop things, that's a purpose of zoning that you're trying to move forward, that's what your master plan talked about. The second thing, the second prong of the positive criteria is particular suitability. Is it particularly suitable to expand this type of use here? And the answer is yeah, you have an existing restaurant on this site, it's been here for a long period of time, didn't have zoning, didn't have parking, so is it particularly suited to put in parking here? Yet, pretty much is particularly suited, particularly when the applicant testified that the property across the street, he doesn't own it anymore where he used to park, he didn't have a chance to buy it. So here, it's very particularly suited to put in parking to make it safe, particularly when you add, add that the parking you're putting in was more than ever existed, has underlying drainage, has ADA compliance, never existed before. There was a question, how safe is it to get in there, it was a good question, but the answer was, we're trying to make it safer, we're trying to actually enhance the safety of that second entrance into the building. So is it particularly suited? I think it is. The real question you have is, how do you mitigate the impacts upon the surrounding properties? And there was questions about, well, you put a fence up it, that was a valid way to do it. The other thing to keep in track, the nearest residential use is Lot 27, it's adjacent, but the house itself is actually to the north of the applicant's property, where the improvements are, where the driveway is, it's actually adjacent to the driveway to Lot 27, and the outside seating is the furthest away from Lot 27, on the catty corner, near the corner of Castle, Cassville and West Veterans Highway. So in that instance, by putting in the mitigating factors, or putting in the defense, asking the good questions, hours of operation at night, and limiting it to that, and the applicant agreed to, you've mitigated the adverse impact upon the adjacent property, such that it's hard for me as a planner to say, there's any substantial detrimental impact. Finally, the second prong of the negative criteria is the, on the intent and purpose of the zone plan. of the zone plan, and I think this is actually advancing the intent and purpose of the zone plan, because you said in two thousand and nine, and as it exists today, you want to encourage economic development in these types of zones. Concerning the C-two variances, the variances, there's two buckets of variances. What exists? There's two types of variances, variance relief for the C variances, the undue hardship standard, and the benefits versus the burden standards. Well, for the bucket of variances with lot depth, I think it's on, I want to make sure I get it right, just for the record, also, you should always get it right. The variances are for minimum lot with frontage and setback. Well, they all exist, and it's a function of size of the lot and whether the building is today. Relief is appropriate under the C-one standard of undue hardship. You can't make the lot bigger, you don't own the property, you don't own the road, you don't own the property next to you, you can't move the existing structure, that's an undue hardship, so those are easy ones to fit. Tougher ones to fit are the C-two ones, that's the additional parking, those variances are that are a function of the site plan. And the real one is the adequacy of parking. John was a hundred percent correct. The standard that you use for parking today is a standard that's somewhat obsolete. Under the current standard for parking, it more than is adequate. I think it meets the benefits of putting in the parking, certainly outweigh any standards, any, any detriments. The benefits of having the outdoor seating certainly help the applicant, and that would only add six or seven parking spaces if you just took it all out, that probably aren't going to be used. So I, I think that that really doesn't help anything, that actually adversely impacts the applicant. So in terms of those other variances that are needed by virtue of the application, the site plan itself, I think under the C-two standard, you can easily find that the benefits of the relief outweigh the burdens.
Thank you, Mr. Gemma. Any questions, why the word for Mr. Gemma?
Any questions for this witness? Mr. Hurley?
Mr. Gemma, for purposes of the applicant's reasons for being here, an expansion of a non-conforming use, the, the expansion here is because of the outside seating?
Expansion, as, as you know, Mr. Hurley, the case law has held any expansion of the use, even the parking lot itself may be deemed an expansion, but here certainly, the expansion of the outdoor seating certainly fits within a criteria of an expansion of the underlying use. You're providing, as indicated by the applicant, I think twenty-one additional seats, you're providing places for food and beverage, it certainly meets within the four corners of an expansion.
But the expansion of the par- parking is created because of the expansion of the outside seating? Without the outside seating, would you need, would there be an expansion?
Well, the expansion of the parking, there is no parking there today that currently exists. The argument could be made that you're putting in substantially more parking than existed that would allow the use itself to get more intense. But in this case, we're fortunate. We also have the issue of intensification by having the parking, people can park there, and you also have the expansion itself of the use with more services of food and beverage outside as well as inside.
The adjoining residence that you testified to there, what zone is that in?
That is also in the NC zone. It's not in the R-zone.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for this witness? Mr. Hill, Mr. Peters, questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I think you're a traffic engineer.
Steve wants to explain about the.
Okay.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of my presentation.
Before I open it to the public, would you like to make a closing statement?
Yes, I would. This, my client purchased Cassville Inn, which I think all of you realize is, was very rundown, and, and it's an awful lot of renovations that he's doing to, to upgrade, to upgrade the site to make it more attractive.
Mr. Hurley, excuse me, are we going to open it to the public before?
Yes, I was just asked if you wanted to make a statement before we opened it to the public.
Oh, before?
Either way you want to do, Mr. Hurley. You know, lawyers always sum up less. But no, seriously, he, he's put an awful lot of money into it, at this point, cutting down the trees, doing the brand, the brand, most importantly, the brand-new septic system. The old septic system on, on the site, which was supposed to have been put in in nineteen-seventy-five, was never put in, and it was really, a tree was growing over the cistern where the septic system was, just behind the bar. So that came out, and then he put, he put the entire septic system off, way off the plan, way off to the back of the plan, where you can see on, on the plan where it is. I, I believe that he's upgraded the, the property tremendously. It's going to be, it's going to be an asset to the, to the, to the township, and I, I think, under all the circumstances, we expect the request that you, that you grant the relief of requesting. Thank you.
All right, we're going to open this to the public. If anybody wishes to come forward and make any comments, have any questions, please Not seeing anyone come forward, we're going to close public session. Board, it's up to us, if anybody would like to make a motion for discussion?
For purposes of discussion, I'll move that the application be approved.
Okay. We have a motion for, and a second, any discussion, any comments?
Mr. Chair?
Excuse me, yes, Mr. Book?
Just a brief, brief observation. I take no objection to Mr. Gemma's testimony, I found it persuasive, and I found it on point. From the point of view of the general welfare, cleaning that spot up, and especially improving the safety approach in, getting that self-contained parking, I think is a big plus. And I do hope that your request to the county that that impact happens, is a fact that Jack, I'd like to conduct that request with the burden sidewalk, I'd like to see that done by Jack, so he has to give his comments as well. So for those couple of reasons, I would like to.
I've listened to all the testimony, and obviously, I, I had some concerns, but I think they've been addressed appropriately. It's an, an application for expansion of a non-conforming use, and I think the standards that have to be applied in that case, and the analysis that we have to undertake, is based on the general welfare. I think the site is particularly suited for the use that's proposed here, which includes the, the outside seating and the additional parking. As I've indicated when Mr. Gemma was testifying, I thought the, the outside seating is what creates the, the need for more parking spaces, and therefore, the, the area for the parking space is limited. It's limited because of the septic area that is required, which restrains the property in a certain regard. There's no question that the improvements that are going, being made, at least in my opinion, are going to be more aesthetically pleasing than they exist now. And as a result of that, I think that presents a benefit to the general welfare of the community in the area. We haven't had any objections to the application from any adjoining neighbors, things of that nature, which I think is, is, is a key indication. As I've indicated before, the particular suitability aspect here is that the use is existing. And if this application were to be denied, that use would still continue in the condition that it, that it is in now. And approving this application improves that condition.
Just for the board's benefit, and, and I, I concur with everything that Mr. Hurley just said, and I'm not, you know, imposing on your right to discuss the application. Again, Mr. Hurley hit the nail on the head, this is an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use, which makes it a D-two variant, okay? The D-two variance is subject to the holding of Burbidge versus Mine Hill Board of Adjustment, which is one seventeen NJ, NJ three seventy-six nineteen ninety. As Mr. Hurley said, there, there needs to be a benefit to the general welfare, but that, that benefit has to be more than just beautification of the property, and, and if, if the board were seeking, in my opinion, I think, I think the applicant here, and as Mr. Hurley stated on the record, has done a wonderful job of showing how this, these proposed, the, this proposed expansion is particularly suited to the specific location, and that, you know, the, the inclusion of an outdoor space, along with additional parking, that, that all goes a long way into, into itself being a general welfare. So again, I, I, you know, based upon what I've heard this evening, I have heard the criteria for the D-two variance, so if the board has any questions about that, I'd be happy to address them. Just one other, one other comment. Reviewing the resolution that was adopted by the zoning board in nineteen ninety-six, on the last page, number, number six reads, and I'll quote, "The application is a permitted use in the zone." All I can, all I can gather from that is what the board meant at that time, that it was permitted as a non-conforming use, and therefore, we are here for an expansion of a non-conforming use, just to support the fact that that's why the application is here. Yeah, that, that resolution from nineteen ninety-six is not my favorite resolution that I ever read, I'll tell you that right now. In the, you're right, it says that, and, and again, in the, in the opening, it says, this is a pre-existing non-conforming use. I think we can all agree, and I think the board can certainly find here, that this is a lawfully created, pre-existing, non-conforming use, which is the criteria required for a D-two variance, okay? So if we all make that particular finding, then, and, which I think, again, based upon the record, is appropriate, certainly, you can evaluate whether they've set forth the D-two variance criteria as I put on the record.
I would just like to make the following comment, as a longtime Jackson resident who's been to the Cassville, I have to say, I think it's, I'd like to applaud you for putting parking onsite, because I've seen, as Mr. Book pointed out earlier, the crossing and everything else, and that, to me, is more of a dangerous situation. I agree with Mr. Hurley, and of course, our council, you know, the beautification, although that's not a, doesn't meet all the criteria, you know, doesn't satisfy the criteria, I do think in this case, it really does play out, and it'll be a benefit to the town. So I am in favor of this application.
I think, one other point that I think we should make, there is a prior resolution restricting the hours of operation. So we should either amend those hours in this, in this resolution, or ask the applicant to comply with those hours, whatever the board decides.
So, Mr. Downs, do you mind? Okay, Mr. Downs, the question to you is, you heard me read the, the resolution on the record. The record limit, the, the prior resolution from nineteen ninety-six limits the kitchen hours to stopping orders, stop taking orders at eleven-thirty PM. Is that something that, that your client is amenable to?
Oh, you can ask him, but I, I believe he did testify that he's going to close the kitchen at eleven-thirty, and, and the last order at eleven-thirty, and then the, and then the last call at twelve during the week, and then he wants to expand the last call so that, so that the bar closes at one o'clock.
The, the, so, let's, let's, let's take this piecemeal, because again, the prior resolution did so. The first question I asked was regarding the food. The prior resolution had no specific findings as to the day of the week, the time, whatever, it said eleven-thirty PM was the time for the last order. So again, if we want to amend that, that would, now would be the time, but I think that was, I, to the best of my recollection, that's what was testified to earlier. So I just want to get clarification for resolution purposes.
Mr. Paelli will answer the question.
Thank you.
Clarification on a Friday and Saturday night, like the kitchen to be open till twelve o'clock.
So the request here is, so, so there is a request to amend the prior resolution Monday through, through Thursday, I'm sorry, strike that, Sunday through Thursday?
Correct, eleven-thirty.
The kitchen would close at eleven-thirty, and then on Friday and Saturday nights, the kitchen would, the proposals that the kitchen would close at, at twelve PM.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, twelve, twelve, twelve PM. Sorry, man, you got no business now. Twelve AM, I apologize.
That's okay, it's all okay.
The other thing that the resolution had indicated was that the outside bar would not serve beverages past twelve o'clock AM.
Correct.
Is that something that you're still amenable to?
Yes.
Every day of the week?
Every day, yes.
Okay, so, so the sole amendment being sought here is as to Friday and Saturday evening, the applicant's requesting to amend the prior hours of operation to extend to twelve AM. Does that clarify it?
As for the kitchen, and then closing, what is the order that's intended to close at? Two o'clock?
Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's two, it's two AM? I think it's two AM?
I think it's two o'clock.
Will you stipulate that you'll abide for the, for the, for the bar closing, you'll stipulate that you'll abide?
Last call, usually it's twelve-thirty, one o'clock out.
Township ordinance? Fair. So, so last call at twelve-thirty, we'll close at one o'clock.
You know, sometimes people don't listen, right?
Can't fault you for that. I wouldn't make, I wouldn't have a living if it weren't for that, though, would I?
I don't have the answer sometimes.
I know we have a motion in a second on the table for giving this meeting an appropriate standing, and we're getting motion. Can I just ask a question? What's upstairs? In all the years, I've never known that.
With the architect drawings, that's just, it was three, it was an apartment, two apartments up there. But we're taking the first four out, and we're bringing it all the way up, like Morris Tavern, so you come in a big old barn, with all kind of features, and all like a house inside a house. So it'll be all tall, instead of walking in, your head hitting the ceiling.
I never knew that, no, that's huge, thank you. Anyway, I apologize for the.
No, that's okay.
I have a motion in a second on the table, and you have a discussion?
I, I presume that the motion's amended to include those, those, unless Mr. Hurley has, wants to address that in another fashion. You made the motion, so.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Mr. Gemma as well for the articulate planning testimony. Some people here might know, I sometimes have a challenge appreciating some planners' testimony, and that was very articulate and spoke to the points, and made it very easy for us to appreciate this application.
Thank you very much, I would be more than aware. Okay, we have a motion in a second, along with the amendment about the time of serving. So roll call, please.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Ms. Parnas?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
It has been granted, thank you, sir. Thank you. Motion to adjourn, all in favor?